June meeting of the county council. Mr. Fry, you unleasing pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody get a chance to read the minutes they emailed. The only thing I seen was where Mr. Hooton made approval to request transfers of money and Mr. Hungate seconded it. That's the only thing I seen.
I'll make the motion to approve with correction.
Actually, make some motion to approve with correction.
I'll second.
The end of seconds, any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we're gonna start out with Mr. Fry.
Good morning, council, and thank you for giving me an opportunity for me to talk to you today. As almost all of you know, I'm state representative, Grand Cry, representative of the third of the county, Southern portion of the county. I do chair the Veterans Affairs and Public Safety Committee. I'm not only coming here to state represent it, but also as chairman of the committee. Over the last thirteen years, I've served in the General Assembly. I've worked on something I'm very passionate about and I believe needs attention, and that's the volunteer fire service funding. Our volunteer fire service, we've studied it for years, and our volunteer fire service is dying. It literally is the average age of volunteer firefighters in their 50s. I can tell you, I've been a career firefighter for most of my life. A firefighter in their upper 50s and 60s has no business being in a working fire. Tremendously demanding physical job, and so we have to continue to recruit young people to replace those of us who are aging out. So a couple of things, or three things at least, that come to our attention that we need to do to try to improve our volunteer fire service as far as the membership. First thing is, we raise lots and lots of money, and always have to raise money. It's very time consuming to do a fish fry and do a chicken dinner or breakfast, and as you can see, I attend way too many of those. And so, we at the state, in this current budget, October 10, which goes into effect July 1st, has $10 million in it for firefighter, air packs, and gear. The fire departments across the state would do an asset management plan, and show us how much of fire gear they have that's in need of replacement, how many air packs need replacement. We submit a grant application to the Indiana Department of Homeland Security, and the Department of Homeland Security would then issue gear or air packs to them based on what's available. $10 million is a lot of money, and will be used most likely pretty fast, and then hopefully in the next budget, there'll be that much or more to continue this process. What we're trying to do is limit the amount of money that has to be raised by the volunteer fire department in order to keep the doors open. If you're a young family, and many of you are, you know that if you're at the volunteer fire department running, making runs, you're also there cleaning up, cooking, preparing for a meal, takes a lot of time. And when your wife says you either need to be home or be down at the fire station, you're gonna be home. We just can't continue to keep our firefighters, the dropout rates pretty high. The other thing is training. It's difficult, training's expensive, and sometimes it's not available. So in this budget, there's $6 million to fund firefighter training. Back in 2015, I passed a bill that created the Indiana State Fire Academy, but that bill has never been funded until now. And so, what the training academy is, is a hub and spoke concept. The main hub would be in Plainfield, next to the police academy, where the firefighters could do specialized training that can only take place there. But the spokes would reach out to regional fire training facilities that'll be established around the state. Our goal is to have one of those every 30 miles from any volunteer fire department in the state. Therefore, the travel time would be much less for a firefighter, and then make those classes available at those regional training facilities. We absolutely cannot cut the training for the firefighters. The fire does not care if you're paid or a volunteer to be there. The person that's trapped in the automobile only wants one thing, out. They don't care if you're a volunteer or a career, they just want you to be the very best that's ever been, and so does a heart attack patient and so on. We cannot decrease our training, but we can make it more effective, financially affordable, and close by. And so those two things are in the budget. When I mentioned fundraising, fundraising is a major, major obstacle for our volunteer fire departments. I have a department in my district that represents four counties in Southern Indiana, not discounting, but I have a volunteer fire department that receives $1,000 a year from their trustee. Their reinsurance on their building allowance is $10,000 a year. They do bingo every week and serve food just to keep the doors open and the lights on. Same, we do not ask our police department, or should we, to do it for free? We don't ask our EMS, we don't ask the people to plow our snow or pick up our trash to do it for free. But we've gotten so accustomed to the volunteer fire department doing it for free that we think it's gonna be there forever, but it isn't. I tell you, it's dying. The numbers don't lie. It's dying. So what do we do? Do we let it go away? If we do, it's a $4 billion a year hit to the state. That's what they say, but $4 billion a year. Can't afford that, we can't afford to close stations. When we have stations that close, it's because they can't staff the apparatus. We had a fire fatality this year in Indiana where a woman died in a house fire across the street from the fire station. The fire station didn't respond, didn't have anybody. We can't have that. And so what we're gonna have is we do, if we are having departments close around the state, not many, hopefully, and that'll mitigate that with what we're talking about today. When one closes, the ones around the outside, they increase the pressure on them. Their run load's higher, their response times are higher. Response time equals survivability. The fire doubles its size every two minutes. So the longer it takes for the firefighters, EMS, to arrive and take care of you, the lower your survivability rate is. There's a thing in EMS term called the golden hour. The golden hour is the amount of time that have to be between when you're critically injured or critically ill until you're on the operating table. After an hour, your survivability drops by 50%. The quicker you can have the apparatus there, the quicker you can have the treatment there, the higher the survivability. So I came up with a plan, working with Chairman Jeff Thompson, Chairman of Ways and Means, took a number of years, 13 years actually, you get this, tried, tried, tried. The former chairman of Ways and Means wasn't interested. Chairman Thompson lives in a volunteer fire department area and gets it. Evidently, he eats too much chicken, too. So we came up with a plan to create a local option income tax just for the volunteer fire service. And it's 0.01% to 0.05% local option income tax. 0.01% on $50,000 a year salary is $36 a year. I started this morning over Speedway with Code Zero, cost me $2. This is $36 a year, less than a dollar a week. If you can't afford that kind of fire service, you probably can't afford fire protection. However, it is, a lot of people, and I don't disagree with them, think that the state of Indiana with these surpluses, we should pay them. Some of you would agree. So do I, so we did. We cut your income tax by 2026 to 2.9%. That same person making $50,000 a year will save $125 a year in income tax because the state of Indiana cut their income tax rate. We didn't feel like it was right to mandate this local option income tax on the counties. Some counties may wanna go all the way up to 0.05. Some counties may only wanna do 0.01. For Decatur County, it's about $750,000 a year if you do 0.01. But even in my math, $36 a year is far less than $125 I'm gonna save. So we basically paid for it upfront. If you wanted to do 0.02, you're still in the black. In 0.03, you're still in the black. So we did pay for it upfront, but we didn't wanna mandate it. We don't wanna do that. I don't like it when the federal government mandates to me, and I'm sure you don't like it when we mandate to you. But we did pay for it upfront, so you can do it if you choose to do it. It's your choice, each county council must approve it. How's the money given out to the departments? We tried several different ideas, and Chairman Thompson came up with this one, which I think is a pretty good idea. It's based on the assessed property value less farm ground. What we're trying to do is say that a fire department that has an industrial complex, or maybe Honda, or maybe something like that, would receive far more money than a department that's pretty much a farming community. They don't have the run volume, they don't have the responsibility, they don't need as much money. So that's the way it would work. If you chose to do 0.01%, it would be divided, that's 750,000 approximately, would be divided by those departments based on assessed property value less farm ground. So I have to tell you as I close that this is the greatest opportunity we've had in my lifetime to save volunteer fire service. This isn't the solution, somebody please tell me what is. We have to find one. Because if we don't, we are going to be dealing with fire departments that can no longer keep the doors open. And we see some of them around our area. Some of them struggle, all of them are struggling for individuals to join. We also renewed the volunteer firefighter scholarships, so you can go to Ivy Tech Community College free of charge if you're a volunteer fireman in Indiana. You can get your degree. People getting nursing degrees with zero debt because they're volunteer firemen. We're trying to save it at the state level, but this is an option that you guys have, that you can do here at the county level. So that's pretty much it. Mr. Chairman, if you have any questions, I'm gonna answer those.
What's, what is our funding for all of our volunteer fire departments? I mean, what would it take to, we give them $86,000 a year out of the public safety tax now, a year.
$8,600.
$86,000.
$100,000.
$1,000.
Each divided between all of them.
Between, yeah. They get $8,600 apiece, but we give them $86,000, correct you?
That's your budget total.
So to answer your question, is this any statewide legislation? I don't know what the cost is to each of your departments in the county. What I do know is some of them get money from the county council, some of them get money from the township trustee, some of them from a community, and all of them need more money. So what this one does is, you would determine what percent, 0.01 to 0.05, that you wanted to do, and then that money would be divided based on that property value.
That's just for volunteer fire departments?
It's for fire departments, but predominantly volunteers, yes.
Did you say 0.01 would be 750, is that what you said?
And about $36 a year, and I got those numbers from Ways and Means, my math isn't very good, so I don't rely on it. I made sure I got it from them. And that same $50,000 a year salary, it saves $125 a year in income tax savings. So that's more than pays for even up to 0.03. 0.03 would be in excess.
Does the city council have to do anything for the?
No one else but you. The county council approves it with an ordinance, and that's the end of it.
So the, when they divide the money, is that something that falls on the county to take care of dividing the funding, or is it state level, or who does all that?
The Department of Local Government Finance can give you the numbers of who has what percentage of assessed value less farm ground, they have those numbers. And then the county would then?
Use those numbers to divide the money?
Yes. This goes into effect July 1st, bill is signed into law, goes into effect July 1st. It's House Enrolled Act Pen 54. It was, I'm sorry, 1454, and it was adopted by Representative Greg Snow. It is the Department of Local Government Finance bill, their annual bill. It's very thick, tons of different provisions in it, deals with all the different tax changes, but this is one provision that I was able to get into bill. Goes into effect July 1st, you made the decision to do it, you would begin in 2024.
This money's going basically for training for firefighters?
This would be to offset their operating costs. The training, the training that we're paying $6 million a year, $10 million a year, but this is, this is to help them pay for fuel to, frankly, it's to help them stop spending so much time raising money.
Chicken.
So they can spend more time with their families, and more time making runs, and being what we ask them to do is be emergency responders.
So the state doesn't have any, they didn't put any restrictions on where the funding gets just for operations?
No, correct. It's just, we go to the fire department, to their general fund, they would decide how to use it.
Is there a deadline on when we have to make a decision?
No, but it would take effect?
Takes effect, but we can decide to do it whenever we decide to wanna do it.
You can, and you can also change the percentage. If you decide to go with 0.01 this year and find out that's not quite enough, or you go with 0.02 and think, well, that might have been too much, you can back it down. What you do have to do though is, at the end of each year, the balance has to be zero. You have to pay it all without, you can't sit on the balance.
Is there any way of contacting, seeing what the volunteer fire departments need? I mean, it would be nice, it would be nice to know where to set them.
I'm sure the county has a firefighters association, fire association.
I don't see Brad here, is he?
Come in and talk to me. The other thing is, I spoke last evening to Ripley County, their council decided to go ahead. I spoke maybe three weeks ago with Jefferson County, and they were positive as well. Think this is gonna happen around the state. It may not happen in every county, and certainly won't happen at the same rate in every county. For example, City of Madison, 13,000 people still volunteer fire department. They are a volunteer fire department because they can't afford to go to a career. They go to 0.05, it's $4 billion a year. They can go to career and still not cost their citizens hardly anything. So that's an opportunity that we haven't had before.
Do I have any more questions?
I appreciate your all's time, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, community health.
I'm Lynn Wester, I'm acting as president of the Board of Directors of the Forest Community Healthcare Clinic, and this is Emily Birkin, who is our clinic director. She's been in our clinic for almost a year now. She took, you might be used to seeing Rosie Steer here representing our clinic, but Emily is here doing a fantastic job for us now after Rosie retired. In front of you, you will see a hard copy of our request for support to the council to the Community Healthcare Clinic in 2024. The council will probably remember that you've helped support this nonprofit agency through the use of receipts from the riverboat revenue for several years now. This coming year, the clinic still needs your assistance to help low-income families who are struggling to afford healthcare in our county. The clinic aims to provide mental, medical, and dental services necessary for patient-centered care, promote long-term care, health, and wellness. When our citizens are healthy, they're able to obtain and abstain employment and provide financial stability for their families. This is easy to see how this helps the overall economy of our community and our county. Physical health and economic stability also contribute to the mental health of the residents of our county. The clinic currently serves the county with two nurse practitioners, Emily is one providing medical services, and three volunteer dentists providing dental services. In 2022, there were 306 patient visits to the clinic. This year, in 2023, we're hoping to increase the number of visits from our county residents and increase our outreach to the community. To help do this, we are hoping to increase our immunization plan that we do in cooperation with the health department. We're planning to provide informational classes to assist patients who are dealing with diabetes, smoking, hypertension, and other classes to help with learning more healthy eating habits. This will all be done in cooperation with the county extension office. And we're also trying to provide blood pressure screenings at the adult center as well as other venues. All of this is down to help increase our visibility in the county so that we can spread the word of the services that we offer to the population here. Currently, the clinic's day-to-day operations are managed by five part-time employees, a secretary who fortunately is also a medical assistant, and a council, the clinic director, Emily, and two nurse practitioners. All of the dentists and physicians that work there at the clinic, as well as board members are volunteer. There are approximately 30 volunteers who assist the clinic with all the things that need to get done. We feel that the greatest strength of this agency continues to be the high quality and personal care services provided by our medical staff. Significant challenges to the program have been increasing need to use social media, you've heard me talk about that before, and all to increase the awareness and outreach of our clinic, and the need for fundraising as we must cover increasing costs of rent, liability insurance, and equipment costs, including improved technology and dental machines that are aging and have to be replaced very soon. This year, the clinic is requesting $22,500 from the county council to assist with our expenses. This is the same amount that we asked for last, for this year that we're saying we're doing right now. Riverboat funds administered through the county council have been so appreciated and essential to the Community Healthcare Clinic in the past. With the exception of the year when we moved in a new facility, county council-administered riverboat funds and United Fund have been the two main sources of our budgetary support. We hope that you, as you consider the county's budget for 2024, see the continuing benefits of the clinic and continue to support it in your 2024 budget as well. Are there any questions? Or, yeah, on the last page of your handout is our budget that we always share with the county budgets as well.
So where are you at to date on your budget as far as your income versus expenses? Do you know?
We know, this year, we have been, we have been receiving, we have received half of what the United Fund has promised, that that's half of the $15,000. And Jim has been writing checks to us every now and then for what the county council promised us for this year, yes. We haven't spent the money on the dental machine as yet. Anthony Knowles is our dentist, and so he's looking for sources of used equipment. So right now, right now, one of the machines that we need is $11,000, so that's on the back burner, he's fixing it as frequently as he can.
We currently have two of those machines, and I'm not sure the age of them. But we also provide services for the Decatur County Detention Center, so all of the dental services for the jail, we're providing those. So we've already seen a fair amount of inmates this year, we're happy to be able to do that. We also provide, kind of bridge those services when they come out of the jail, where they can get medical assistance. So to get any kind of state insurance, you have to have a solidified individual group of an address. So when they leave, not all of them have somewhere that they can go and can show that. So we got this gap of time where they can't really get hit or Medicaid, but they don't have the services inside the jail anymore. So we're also providing those gaps for our inmates here in the county, I suppose.
So it looks like the bulk of your increased expenses is rent and insurance? And then you're asking for almost $2,000 above what the increase in your operating cost is? I'm guessing that's to save for some of this equipment, is that what you're thinking?
I've been in surprise. And I, we're looking at numbers over the weekend, and we're currently at 75 patients, that's the number of visits this year, that's just how many patients we see from the medical side. Dentally, we've been able to offer at least one dental clinic a month, and that's again all volunteer. We're right about three dental patients that we've been able to serve. So our numbers are looking to be on the increased side this year. With that state, as many of you probably have heard, Medicaid and HIT, they started recertifying everyone, so during COVID, everybody kind of slid by, they just kept rolling over. I had a patient two weeks ago, she made $63 too much to keep her hip insurance. She does work full-time, they just don't offer benefits, and then she made $63 too much. She requires an injection every six months that costs almost $3,000. So we were able to go through, the company manufactures that and get her assistance, but again, she still needs a medical provider to do that. So we are seeing a lot of, an increase in numbers as the year goes by, and we're seeing this state kind of tighten up.
Do I have any other questions?
Your increase in rent, is that gonna be something that they're gonna annually do to you out there?
We're not sure.
Man, that's a pretty big chunk, 2024. Did you know that was gonna happen?
Oh, we knew from '22 to '23, they haven't. This is projected from '24.
So they haven't come in and said they were gonna raise you yet, okay.
They haven't, we're just trying to be reactive and help.
Okay, gotcha.
Proactive.
Right, not reactive, sorry, again.
So, looking at your '23 budget, I mean, took in less than your expenses are showing, and if you haven't paid for your machine yet, that's $11,000 off that bottom line, but how are you, if everything came to fruition and it went through, how are you offsetting the difference in the income versus expenses?
Well, in the last couple of years, we have a savings account that we've had to delve into. And we've been resisting increasing the patient visit is $10. For a medical visit, and $20 for the dental, we've been resisting doing that. And been trying to also do our, the smaller fundraiser events that we have.
And we also, if someone can't pay, just still see them.
Yeah.
We realize that a larger fundraiser may be in the future.
I'll be honest with you, I'm hoping the Board of Health can help with this. Is what I'm hoping with, because the money we give you, we really, whatever riverboat funds they project coming in, we break it down a percentage, that's the reason you got[1699.84][1700.08]$16,875 this year, so that's, we try to be fair to everybody coming out of that riverboat fund. But I'm hoping that they, I'm really, because what they're getting next year is not what they thought, but the year after, '25, there's pretty good change coming to Board of Health. That's the reason we can't cut the rate or nothing, or can't cut their taxes at all, because it's that math, you gotta keep going, so. But, no problem, take a look at budget time. Okay, child advocacy, Ms. Jen? Okay.
Good morning. My name is Kelly Jody, I'm the executive director of the Children's Advocacy Center of Southeast Indiana. We work with the team of first responders to deal with allegations of child abuse, child abuse, neglect, as well as witness to crime. We have offices in three locations, one being Greensburg here, I saw it in the building, as well as... I saw it in the building, as well as Dillsborough and Madison. In your packet, I have the formal letter of request. And then I also brought some case data. The case data sheet with the 2009 date on the top, that outlines all of the counties that we serve. We do not charge anyone ever to come there. We are 365, 24/7 service. We work primarily with law enforcement prosecutor's office, as well as DCS, DCS is our Department of Health Services, is where we typically receive the majority of our referrals to our office. We do have seven employees, we have three advocates, three forensic interviewers, and two education prevention specialists that deliver our education program in our schools around the entire region. So yes, the 2022 data sheet is, last year, you may remember that our number was the highest in 2021 as we were still receiving a lot of referrals due to the COVID lockdown. So while it looked like the number went down to 538 in 2002, let's remove the influx of the COVID situation. We are still already this year 30% higher at this point in time in our handed data on Friday, we find that often. So our numbers are up this year. Even with the number being 538, which sounds drastically lower than the 640 from the year before, 538 is still the biggest number without COVID included, without the COVID lockdowns included. So one thing I'm really excited about is the one side of your packet. This is the infographic for the East Greenway, where our funding source is, our Dr. Icom. And then our abuse prevention program. This was super important, and it was not offered in the county by us. So we, I'm very happy to say that in August, we will be coming to the Greensburg School District. So that's a kindergarten to 12th grade, age appropriate, and research-based program. We go classroom by classroom rather than large assembly-style prevention education. What sets aside our program from other large assembly-style abuse awareness programs is that we do have one-on-one time with students in classroom who advise that they have concerns about the damage could be happening. I do foresee that the numbers typically escalate when we have visited a school district. So I cannot foresee what those numbers will look like for the state of county at this point in time, unless we won't be here until August. But that was the big initiative that I had hoped to work on from last year to this year. We were successful in creating that relationship with the school district and the superintendent. And that was one good thing that occurred in the past year. And then always, the purpose of a CAC is to minimize trauma. So if you'll take a look at this infographic, you can see that what used to happen when kids needed help towards youth or lack or witnessed to violence, it typically started with a disclosure to someone close, you know, maybe it was a counselor or teacher or anyone. And then that person would notify, and then it would go to potentially a psychiatrist, a school counselor, DCS, the law enforcement officers detected, and then they have to talk to the, all of those involved in the legal process. And so when they come to the CAC, because we are highly trained, we are undergoing the trainings of training, it's important at this point in time to make sure that we are in perfect alignment with the National Child Alliance, Children's Alliance standards. They will be coming to do psych visits here at a point soon. But we make sure that everything is taken care of at one time situation so the child doesn't have to continue to repeat the story and relive it and tell so many people. And I cannot tell you how many times, when done improperly, by the time, if someone is asked and then asked so many questions, and then the child just told their story over and over and over and over again, by the time they get to the CAC where we have the equipment, and it's suitable for court proceedings, and the question, live questioning is a highly, highly specialized protocol. By the time they get to the CAC, when they've been asked too many times, they typically just say, "I'm so sick and tired of talking about this. I don't want to talk about this." Sometimes they won't talk at all. And sometimes they will disclose again, but hopefully it will be the last time. So the goal is to make sure that we get their story one time and that doesn't need to be repeated. Also, that I find noteworthy is with our school prevention program, we have been recognized by the state of Indiana for our mandated reporter training. And so my director of community outreach, Shannon Perry, has provided the mandated reporter training. That's so important to help people realize and recognize when to call, what it looks like to call, and how to call properly. Anonymous reports are not as effective as someone identifying or distinguishing themselves. And you'd be surprised how many times teachers or school counselors don't want to report themselves because they have to work in a community every day, all day, with parents or potential perpetrators, et cetera. So our reported mandated reporter training has been brought in by the CAC to all of our staff and all the rest of CAC staff throughout the state of Indiana. And it will be offered to all of our law enforcement and our Department of Children's Services prosecutors are welcome to it. And yes, so that was another positive thing that's occurred over the past year. And again, thank you so much for always continuing to support what we do. You are fully staffed here in Greensburg all the time with Heather Scott and Ellen Hankins, and I do appreciate it. Thanks for listening to all that's going on with the CAC.
I'd like to see a breakdown of how much is in the county and how much is in the city. Because I see Greensburg as a city only pays $3,000, and we pay $6,500.
Yes, that came from the police department, the Greenberg Police Department.
So the city of Greensburg doesn't pay anything.
You requested $10,000? So, well, we're, yeah, we'd do the same thing on that. I think we, according to my budget, we gave you $7,500 this year. Is that correct? Anybody else have any questions? Because it is a good program, correct Nate?
Best.
Okay, I know you use it quite a bit.
We use it routinely here, consummate professionals. We're grateful for the help they provide every single time we go through it without fail.
And you go to all schools, right? Decatur, all Decatur County schools, not just Greensburg?
Just Greensburg right now. I only have two staff, and we're covering, oh, how many buildings? 13 buildings last year with only two yells. So I would love to hire a third person. I have families screaming for help for this prevention program. Those prevention folks, it is a Senate bill mandate that the program be offered in schools. However, the state isn't funding it at this time. So I did, I was able to squeeze the prevention folks onto a federal supplemental grant for this year. It ends on September 30th. And I will continue to be able to fund them through general budget and fundraising dollars. But that's only to amazing what we have currently, including Greensburg, for sustainability purposes. But yeah, we would love to be, and the rest of Decatur County, as well as Scott County is begging for it, all the way down towards Clark, et cetera. But that's going to require more personnel because they go, you know, if you look at their schedule, like, it'll be several weeks to get through Greensburg, and then they'll move to South Ripley, and it'll be several weeks to move through the entire district because it's kindergarten itself. Then we go to Myland, then we go to South Dearborn, then we go to Rising Sun, and then we go to Madison Consolidated. And those larger school districts obviously take longer amount of time because we don't, we try to avoid the large assembly approach because we have students that will connect better in a small group setting and let us know if something's wrong.
Do you currently have students at North and South Decatur?
Oh, good. I do not, we do not track what school district they visit from us. So, oh, okay. And unfortunately, I cannot use volunteers in this situation. I can use volunteers for fundraising purposes, which we rely heavily on our volunteers, our kings and queens from Mardi Gras, which you all are aware, representative from kings and queens for the Mardi Gras in February. However, I can safely use volunteers for this situation because the training requirements are so rigorous, and the nature of HIPAA is problematic. And so it has to be, I mean, it is a full-time employee-type situation, so with a lot of responsibility. When they do the education prevention program, the children do have an opportunity to stay whether or not they are safe or not. And should they mark that they are not safe, then we do stick with that. And as a result, we have to make minimal facts with minimal facts because we don't want to re-interview. We have to make a determination on whether that is a hotline call or not. And so if you look at that one piece that was listed, it's the number, it's your prevention. It tells you how many interviews were completed at the school level. And sometimes this is an emergency where we are literally concerned about putting the child on a bus and sending them home at the end of the day. So you can see, we had 420 interviews, which means 420 kids stated, out of the 16 schools, we had 5,000. So 420 said they indicated they did not feel safe, and that resorted in 41 hotline reports. So that's an immediate safety issue that, obviously, they're not all substantiated. So.
It does look like the schools that you're doing prevention at are contributing though, too, from the budget, right?
Yes, yes. Yeah, the prevention, I put it on the bottom, like in the, in the income. But we continue to do our, we continue to have our collaboration, our MOU with our mental health folks. And CMHC is up here, and we still are doing our referrals to Cincinnati Children's Hospital. And we are also still offering the telehealth option through Cincinnati Children's for Greensburg as well, too.
Any other questions, concerns? We'll take a look in August to see how much we get coming out of the riverboat fund.
I expect it to be down this year, as you mentioned earlier, so, but thank you, thank you. I guess they were.
Thank you, man. Okay, Ms. Howell?
So I'm just kind of going over what we went at the last meeting. I revised it, you know, a little bit. So on the second page where it got highlighted, that I've been pulled by, like, a lot of other clerks from other counties that we do, the, this is from the State Board of Accounts manual, Clerk's Manual, where our first or chief deputy in each county is entitled to appoint a first or chief deputy without the approval of, you know, the Board of Commissioners to county or superior county court, warehouse two or more courts, which branches county offices maintain. The deputies in charge also should, can be appointed as a first or chief deputy and shall receive compensation as such. Found in our Clerk's Perpetuation Fund, which is not tax dollars, these are fees that we collected from our office yearly. The balance right now is over $134,000. So if we paid an additional $4,000 per year from this fund, it can be maintained. So I'm not asking for, like, any additional funds. I just need approval from you guys to be able to pay that out. You know, election deputy, first deputy job, it is not just an eight, four Monday through Friday job. You know, get calls, texts, emails in the evening or the weekend. There's a lot to it. And just reminder that, you know, we are projected to save the county tax dollars, almost $34,000 over the next four years alone by Patricia's, you know, not utilizing, utilizing microbeats as we do currently. We do currently pay them a lot. And I do think it's highly important to not have a high turnover rate for this position. And it's, can't really compare us to other offices, you know, wouldn't want to say you're in a can of worms. We are the only office that does elections, and there is a lot to it. And I just think that, you know, this is something that we need to look at and start doing.
What are you use out of your perpetuation fund?
I'm sorry?
What are you use that perpetuation fund for? Is there other things that come out of there annually?
Not much, no.
What can we use?
Janet? Preservation of records. So that includes paying someone to preserve records, maintain them. And election records have to, they're permanent. You have to have those, and that's by the state, that's not just by.
And currently, she is going through every single one, trying to make sure that they're updated and current. And there is literally a file cabinet full of these computers to go through. And that's, that's a classic, that's not something that's going to ever end.
How many counties have the first election deputy or first deputy? Most of them have one?
Most of that have reached out to me, have at least a first deputy or chief deputy, or both, and then some second deputies on down.
Is there wages compared to what you're asking? Is the wages you're asking for compared to what their first deputy?
Some obviously pay more.
Yeah, I just wondered in a county of our size, whether it was, you know, whether you're comparing apples to apples on.
Yes.
You understand what I mean?
Yes, yes. And some of them do, like, a percentage of what the clerk gets paid, but most of the person I reached out to makes more than I do, so.
Any other questions, concerns? I do know we have a county looking at salary study, correct?
And that's going to be at least probably a couple of years out, right? Because that's not even going to be.
It'll be seven months, yeah.
Should be about next year, shouldn't we? Patty, correct?
We're ready to start the first of July. But it's going to be at least a six-month process.
Okay.
So that wouldn't be until at least 2024. Huge election.
Yeah, I know.
Do what?
And this is just moving forward.
It's not, we're not asking for, asking for us anything additional when the funding is there, and that's what it's there for, so.
And you're not asking for back pay now, back to the first of the year?
No, we're just starting.
You want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve it through the perpetuation fund.
I'll second it.
Kenny makes a motion, Bill seconds. Any other discussion?
Yeah, are there, is there any other fallout or concerns we need to have about having a first deputy? Does that mess up anything HR-wise or anything like that?
Now, is this permanent even if there's change of elected official?
This is permanent for Patricia.
For? As long as she's.
So as long as she's, as long as she's employed?
Yes.
Okay, so the elected official can't switch?
Correct, not a chief deputy, yes.
We did have some discussion about this in our compensation meeting and how that should be handled, whether it should be a salary or a per-election type pay. So that was something else that we wondered if, because sometimes we don't even have elections, depending on the, on who's running and all of that.
There'll be one this year, will there?
Right, I don't know.
There will be one in Westport.
There still will be another.
There'll be one in Westport? So do you have to open them all up?
Yep. Well, maybe, because you have those, I believe, now.
Just Westport area.
Just the Westport area?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's no reason to pay for, throughout the county, just for Westport elections, so most of it was just around Westport.
And we also found funds out of our own budget to pay for the election cage, so we didn't ask the county for that either. So we're fighting that.
I have a motion to second on the floor. Any other discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Don't need a hand count?
Do we have opposed?
I don't have any opposed now.
Okay, so unless you want.
Need a signature anywhere, or we good?
She has submitted, you see the 144, that's the salary.
Okay.
So we'll write on the back that you approved it and just get it.
Okay.
It'll be a minute.
Thank you. Mr. Harder.
Good morning, everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, the council, chairman, thank you. For the record, my name is Nate Harder, I'm prosecuting attorney. I sent you an email to your government emails. In case you did not receive that, I brought a copy of it, outlining that I am here today for what's concerning salary issues. There are two asks or topics, if you will. The first, I hope is easier, and so that's why it's first, hopefully deal with that swiftly before moving into a larger discussion of the budget proposal that I am intending to put in front of you. However, the first issue is, I recently lost a deputy prosecutor. It was a mutual parting of ways. It so happens that he's receiving more money now than he was when he was here. And his wife, who is a deputy prosecutor in my office, also knows now what the job market looks like out there. I'm going to need to fill that position, and, well, we're trying to figure out what I should pay. And a part of the discussion has been, what should a deputy prosecutor make, what should somebody who has a Juris Doctorate, a terminal degree, make, even out here in rural, small-town Indiana? What we've found is that the going rate is $8,000 or $8,000 plus. That's statewide. We mentioned this Wagner Erwin Shealy firm that is performing the salary study for Decatur County. That firm also was recently retained by the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council, and we are going to get more into that, hoping for phase two of the discussion. But pertinent here, their recommendation for statewide prosecutors, minimum starting salary, fresh out of law school, is $8,000. Now, in this, I have three deputy prosecutors that are full-time. One of them, one of the positions pays 86, the second one pays 74, and the last one pays 68,000. I have, the one that left was the 86,000. So I have enough money in that line item to pay that person 82, 85, 86. But then I would have left behind the two deputy prosecutors in my office who might have more experience. Makes it significantly less, not just a little bit less. And so I've worked with Christie Smiley, looking at the balance and the funds, the fact that we have not filled this position yet and won't be filling it until probably August, as well as some unpaid leaves we have, some maternity leaves. And there is room in the budget this year, without expending any new dollars, to pay all three deputy prosecutor positions 82,000. That would level the playing field while we wait for the study to come out. It would allow me to be competitive, and it would allow me to not leave anybody behind in the process. I think that's consistent with the going rate around the state, and that's why I brought that proposal to you, costing you no additional dollars. The request would be that you amend the salary ordinance to allow me to shift the money that you've already appropriated around, to pay all three deputy prosecutors 82,000. So that's, that's the first item for discussion. I think it might be appropriate to stop there and answer any questions you have about that before moving on to the bigger picture. Oh, I know the two are related.
So that's, that's for this year, but what about next year?
Yes, sir. You're 100% right. And in the letters, this will cost you no additional dollars in bold.
This year?
Not in bold, this year. And I'm aware of that. Now, it depends on what the council's going to do for raises, but I don't think it would, it will cost you more next year than this year. But I don't know that it will cost you much more than what the increase would have been, for example, had, had Mr. Clark stayed, okay? So I think what the compensation committee is hoping to recommend, and I don't know how much this has been discussed out loud here, but there's a discussion about percentage, there's a discussion about taking into account years of service. And using those numbers, Mr. Clark and Ms. Orchard, both would be getting pretty substantial raises because of those years of service, that would have been coming down the pipe anyway. So there would be an increase, but it would be a moderate increase, something like 5,000, probably not more than 10, over the year previous. And certainly, given that these are raises, significant raises, if the council were to say, for these positions, we're not doing the 2% plus longevity years, I would understand why the council would say, no, no, you got your raise, right here, when Harder asked for 82 for everybody. I know that's treating us differently, but then again, literally nobody else has a Juris Doctorate.
Well, but you, you still have to sustain the increase you're going to get this year.
Well, that's coming. That's coming either way. The Wagner Erwin Shealy study is coming, and part of what we're hoping to talk about here today, I have with me, from the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council, Brock Patterson, who runs our legislative affairs at IPAC, and also my chief deputy Doug Brown, to help answer questions about this bigger picture. But the firm that we've hired to tell us, what do people get paid, what should they get paid in the state, has already studied my office. They've already done that study, and what they recommend is a minimum starting salary of 8,000. So we sort of already have a preview of what they're willing to say for us, too. And by waiting until we're done, all we're doing is hamstringing my ability to be competitive, paying on people, if that works. I, I cannot be in a position where I lose another deputy prosecutor to the market, which is a high potential possibility, and have a maternity leave, which I know is coming this fall, here in a month or two, two and a half. And then Mr. Brown and I are together, the two of us, handling all three courts. That, that can't happen. I have to be competitive right now. And since we already know what the Wagner Erwin Shealy study is going to say about my office, I'm, I'm asking you to float with me for a year or two until the study comes out. And if the study comes back and says that we're supposed to be reduced, and that's what the study says, I, it won't, it's not going to, because that's what the study's already shown statewide. And to my fellow members of the committee, I know that's not what we discussed as a group, but this is, it's a little bit different because they have Juris Doctors. I've got to.
Any other questions? What's next year going to look like?
Last year, the county general budget for the criminal division on the prosecutor's office side was 784,000 and change, I believe. The budget proposal for this year for the criminal side of the prosecutor's office is going to be 1.4. Here to tell you more is Brock Patterson. So I would like to bring Brock up here. The Prosecuting Attorneys Council engaged the services of Wagner Erwin Shealy, in order, which is a firm out of Monsey, and that most counties use, and respect, to do staffing studies, to do compensation studies, to write job descriptions. That's why we hired them, they're really good working dudes. And they brought us back results about what the state is facing statewide. Brock can tell you about the formula that they used and the results that that generated. My budget proposal, that I'm trying to tell you about out loud and transparently in public, is significantly larger than what I know the council can do. But it reflects the reality of that study. It shows us a direction that we can chart, and maybe shows us where there's room for incremental progress towards that larger goal. I, I don't mind the effect, the physical effect and reaction that I just saw of your bases. But I do want to give the chance to explain where that number's coming from, that this is not something I pulled out of thin air, that there's a basis for it, and maybe that helps explain why the ask is what it is, and where we can go from there. So next I'll hand it over to Mr. Patterson.
Good morning. So Nate, sorry, you gave me a great introduction with the caveat that I'm going to tell you that you need to spend a lot more money. So, sorry about that. My name is Brock Patterson, I'm the legislative counsel and director of governmental affairs for the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council. And so what I do day to day is, I'm over at the State House, where I'm talking to our folks in Congress about all things criminal law-related prosecutor. I've been here for three years, I also have a Juris Doctorate, and I was with the legislation three years before that. So I've, I've been around this game for a while, and, you know, I've heard, heard these concerns. I used to work with Representative Thompson, Representative Cherry was a little bit closer to here, so I've been around the ways and means of vote for quite a while. To kind of go over what the big picture is here, we hired WIS about a year and a half ago to start doing a statewide study of the state of prosecution, where we're at in every individual county, with their pay, with their staffing, and what their workload should look like. And the results were what we expected, but they were staggering. Across the state, we're over 400 lawyers short, and that's deputy, deputy attorneys, we've got about 800, and we need about 1,200. The way that we determined that is, we didn't use our own numbers to kind of budget out. What we did was, we took the Public Defender Commission, statewide commission that's been around since the mid-'80s, and took their public published record, that all counties that opt in to the state reimbursement have to abide by. And we took their numbers directly and placed it over our deputy prosecutor numbers to say where we at. And that's where we found that we're 440 short as of, as of 2019, so I'm sure that that's even larger today. We constantly have in nearly every county, some sort of opening for a deputy prosecutor, chief deputy prosecutor, or pulling from each other's counties, kind of reaping them in, you know, one way, shape, or form, just to get experience. And I'll tell you that Decatur County is no different. They have five and a half attorneys, so five whole, including Nate and the chief. They have a half, which I would assume is your child support. So five and a half, the study suggested, based on the caseloads from 2019, my guess is 22, 23, or about the same, if not higher, that they're supposed to have 10. So they're woefully short, and based on the numbers of their pay, they're underpaid from what our suggested minimum was. I want to go into the minimum a little bit, only because it's a little outdated at, at this point. And the reason why I say it's outdated, 80,000, is still a great goal. We took that number from, again, the Public Defender Commission's recommended minimum annual salary for a deputy, deputy public defender. So that's, again, we're kind of doing a little tit for tat there. But after the legislative session this year, big budget year, there were some numbers that were appropriated in different areas, and now we've got some averages from some other, you know, criminal law-related fields, one of which is, so our statewide deputy average salary right now is about $70,000. That's, that's all across the board. These are all attorneys, whether big county or small, obviously the big counties, for the most part, have a higher average salary. And that kind of hurts where, you know, Nate's coming from. That hurts because it's, it took me 45 minutes to get from Indianapolis today, and if I'm weighing, you know, $86,000 was, was what he was making, but if I'm weighing $68,000 is the lowest deputies paying, and I can go up to Hamilton County and make 97 as a start, that's, that's pretty good. If I have a few years under my belt, I'm into the six-figure range. That's, that's kind of worth the drive for me. DCS, DCS attorneys, we're losing a lot to them, which I cannot believe I'm saying, but we're in a world where DCS is averaging, their attorney's salary is averaging $97,000 a year. If you're a supervisory attorney, again, you're going to be higher than that. The state just passed a huge raise for state police, VNR, exise police, and now they're going to average, with a starting bonus, 73,000. And that's not, I'm sorry, that's not average, that's their starting pay right out of the academy, 73,000. So the folks that are bringing you to these cases, bringing the prosecutors to these cases, might be making more compared to the person that has to prosecute that case and has, you know, and this is nothing against any of these professions, so please don't take it that way, but someone that has more schooling, it, it kind of goes, it's kind of counterintuitive to what, what we always thought of with higher education. And then there was one other raise. So there is a portion of the code that was created way back when for what are called state-paid deputy prosecutors. So the way that the state works is, the elected and the chief are both paid by the state. You get a federal reimbursement for your 40 prosecutor, and then there are some state-paid deputies that were created for mental health institutions and DOC facilities around the state. So there's about 26 right now across the state. After this past session, the state did give them all a raise, a change in their calculation of how much they had paid based on the elected prosecutors, so their minimum salary, all paid by the state, $124,000. So just to show the stark difference of where some of our deputies are compared to others, and this is a huge, huge change. There, so what we did during session, after having the results of that study, was go to legislature and let them know, let them know where we were. We had four bills that were filed that dealt with this issue in, in various ways. Unfortunately, at the end of the day, there was some, you know, everybody asks for money during a legislative session, or a budget year, especially one where you're, we have so much, right? And we didn't get what we asked for at the end of the day. Some, some, some folks wanted it, some folks didn't, and that's just, that's just where we end. Now, as the first go-around, I'm sure that that's not going to mean, you know, it, we were asking for 20 million a year from the legislature, and that was to fund a third of the state to give us to the numbers that I'm, I'm talking about. So really, what we're trying to do is stop the bleed first by raising everybody's salary, and then backfill all the positions that we need. What that proposal would have looked like was a 70% reimbursement to the counties for deputy prosecutor salaries. So you all still would have had a foot in the game. But obviously, the load would have been lightened a little bit. What we did math-wise was basically, we realized that at 70%, you could raise how much you needed to pay these folks, you could backfill those offices, and then after reimbursement, you would be paying either the same or slightly under what you were paying prior to the reimbursement. So really, there wouldn't be much or any cost increase to the county. The next steps for us, I actually have a meeting after this at 1:00 with Speaker Houston and Representative Thompson, to kind of go over, you know, what happened during session, what are our next steps, and because we're, we're in crisis mode at this point. So unfortunately for that, though, it's, it's a 2025 realization, so we've, we've got a couple of years here to figure out that that bleed is not going to stop from the prosecutors across the state. And I would hate for Nate or anyone else around here to, to lose additional deputy prosecutors. I will say, because there is so much money out there, Representative Frye already talked about a local option income tax, option for volunteer firefighters. I believe that calculation is a May provision that comes out of the public safety tax. So it's just, you all are already doing that, but that's, you know, just kind of like the guideline of what counties can do. The legislature did, though, pass a new local option income tax specifically for the county judicial system. It can fund up to half of your county costs associated. So that's your public defender, that's your courts, that's the deputy prosecutors and staff, your probation department. So all of those things can be up to half. You can look at that bill, it was Senate enrolled act 417. Senator Oldman, Representative Thompson were the authors. And if you look at the fiscal on it, it, it shows what they estimate to be, you know, the revenue that can be generated from that, if you need to max, obviously you still have your, your tax caps, but that, that is another option that's out there. And contrary to the public safety tax, there's no sharing with any, you know, local municipalities, it's all county funds. So that, that is a little bit more advantageous, especially if you don't need to build it in jail. But I, I think I've covered quite a bit of where I've been working at, but if there's any questions on any of these numbers, happy to answer it.
So the state's not going to help at all?
So the state?
Is that the end of that?
Right now, no. The state knows, you know, our friends in the legislature know that this is a problem. It's just, you know, how severe they, they want to weigh it, I'm not sure. But what we've heard from some folks in the legislature is... But what we've heard from some folks in the legislature is, well, this is the county problem. I don't think the county should be paying any of this. Or we've, well, we've actually heard the county should be putting the whole bill, and we've heard from other folks, the county shouldn't be paying for any of those state officers. They should be, the whole office should be paid by the state. And, you know, I went back and did the math, and there were, it's like 140 new courts have been created statewide over the past 15 years. And I think the state kind of caught on this year because there were about 43 more that were requested, and none of them were created. They all got shot down. So we're kind of hitting this spot where they realize that the bill's getting high, and there are other folks that are mandated to staff those courts that aren't keeping up.
If I could, that's one of the reasons, one of the asks that I'm here for today. The first, and the one that I hope is easiest, is to allow me to pay the money I already have to, for $82,000 for each of the three deputy spots by the new salary ordinance. The second was to raise awareness around the statewide issue and to help explain the large budget ask while preparing for what would be an incremental discussion and not something where I expected to give you the whole thing. But I also don't want to underestimate the power that this council has, that each of you has as a counselor, especially through your statewide organizations. If this is an issue where you agree that there is a need, but you're concerned about the county's ability to double my budget, then it may be time to involve your statewide organizations in working with Brock and others to work with the legislature to say, come on board, state. If this is something you want us to do and do well, then your power as members of your statewide organizations shouldn't be underestimated. I would encourage you and ask you to join us as we ask for this in the next year or two, to ask the state to come on board. I know that's a huge number. I'm not expecting you to do it. I am asking you to work with me to float for a year or two while we wait for the study to come back and while we attempt to get state funding, while understanding that that's not a promise, it's an effort.
Absolutely. We had AIC support this year, Ryan Hoff and David Portoff were great to work with, or Bodor, sorry, that's, Dave, Al, sorry, David Bodor. And then from the commissioner's side, Jake German and I are great friends, so we've all had, you know, kind of boots on the ground in the State House, but it's a lot better to hear from all of you from every county across the state when we're trying to make this big push and get a lot of money off of our shoulders, so.
Well, it just so happens that the ICCA council meeting is this weekend.
Great.
And I'm the secretary of that, so I'm sure we'll have some discussion around that. Some of the concerns I have that I haven't heard discussed, the recommendation is for us to go from five attorneys, and thank you for what you guys do with five, but to suggest that we need twice as many when we're functioning with five, not saying that we can't function better, seems like a pretty big leap.
Right.
The other thing I would have a concern with is we're going from 10 to five. Obviously, that's a facility concern, which is another cost that would be on top of that because we would have to find a place to facilitate that large of an office. So I haven't heard a lot of discussion around that, but those are other things that would be concerns.
Absolutely. And I'm sure that it seems like five to 10 is a huge jump, and that's why I want to say that these are well-established numbers that four or two-thirds of the state accept for reimbursement purposes. And while I don't doubt that Nate's office is doing a tremendous job, I've seen his caseloads, they're insane. You know, I sometimes wonder how this guy's looking, especially with young ones at home. But, you know, I don't have any young ones of my own, and I could not imagine juggling at all, but I have full confidence that he's doing great. I think it's more so when you weigh the fact that not only are these caseloads, we're not even, we're not even looking at workloads, the public defender caseload standards are cases that are assigned to them, but there's all sorts of cases that we don't follow. And it's about a quarter of the cases that we have to screen, we have to investigate, we have to work with our law enforcement partners or victims or community members to say, hey, is there something here? And we have to go through all the evidence in terms of whether or not we can file this case. Those don't ever go to a public defender, and those aren't even in the estimates that I'm providing. So even though it seems like we're doubling, I just think that the reality is that he's so, he and so many others like him are just beyond strained, and that's why we're seeing people leave, not only for higher salary, but, you know, just a better work-life balance.
Might be why I cried last time I was here.
It was working weekend to night, right?
It's the post-conviction caseload as well.
Hope to finish off and deal with that. I will say, Deanna, to your point, 2019, it just so happens was an apex year for us. It was top of the line for COVID. We have dropped down, and so the proposal between you actually is not for the all 10 attorneys. It's actually the moderate version where we asked to grow to eight. So it's actually two attorneys shy still of, two attorneys shy of the top numbers.
And that was another concern I had, is what happens when you get to 10, if your caseload drops, then what do you do with those people?
And that's why I actually presented the moderated version, not the top apex version.
That's not, that's not a bad approach, just to get at your concern. Once the government gives, it's hard to take away, right? But there is some national DOJ studies out there that say that as yours, your prosecutor's office is better staffed, your caseloads may drop. And that's only because there's better screening in play and you're having more time to really kind of figure out the whole situation. So a moderated approach might be the best position for your county to take to make sure that you're not, you know, overfunding.
And to Brock's point, and another way we can help mitigate that concern, there are not 440 attorneys to fill those spots tomorrow. It would have to be one every other year for our office and really evaluating, is it still appropriate? Is this still something we need? We would not add four or five attorneys next year. We couldn't, we could not fill those positions across the state. So it would have to be something we would negotiate and incrementally do every year. Part of what I've tried to do during my 10 years prosecutor is to bring you the long-term vision and not just, here's a fire, put it out, here's a fire, put it out. With mixed success, sometimes there's a fire, you need to put it out, but I wanted to try to show you four, five, eight, 10 years down the road where I think you're going, rather than saying, here's what you need to give to me right now. With the exception that I would like to begin paying my people and being able to host the new position at 82, so that one was more of an action item for today, if that's possible.
So you're saying in August, we're going to have to do some horse trading?
In August, we're going to have to do some horse trading. I have an idea of what we might be able to do that would be satisfactory to the council, but obviously it will depend on revenues, what everybody else is asking for too. In the meantime, I just have the short-term ask, two short-term asks, one, the $82,000, all three move around the money to do that, so that we can float with me for a year or two while we wait for the study at that rate. And then really get involved with your statewide bodies to help us get the state funding to take some of this off the plates.
Now, was your study a private study or was it done for the state?
It was done for the state.
It was done for the state.
So we were the ones that requested it, but we published, we published the results of that study.
I'm happy to get you any data you'd like to have.
Well, I just wondered, I just, you know, I didn't know it was an outside firm that came to the state and said, here's what we need to do.
Yeah.
Where the state said, hey, we.
Yeah, it was like throwing Shelly out of Quincy.
We solicited that out of black and over Shelly. So, well, then I'll be happy to get you copies of it for a trustee. I just don't want to overpay for the day.
So if we take those three positions as he's paying them today at 86, 74, and 68, and then change them to 82 each, then that's $18,000 more next year over what we're paying currently, is what that comes out to.
Thank you, Julie. Assuming no additional attorney needs or other unpaid expenses.
Okay. Well, let's get to the, what he wants to do, move them up to 82,000. Any other questions, concerns?
I just need an amended 144 for that.
An amended 144, okay.
Thanks.
Well, I, we have the funding in there right now to face this year out to do it, but I would only agree with that if we, I don't want to agree to do it again next year until we go get our budget looks at the numbers, because just sitting here running through my mind and reliving the last five years, budget time, you know, or how hard it was last year to get a budget where it was at, and then now we're talking about, you know, just, we're kind of freaking out at a $1.4 million budget, which is not, you know, not unusual when you throw a number like that at us, so how are we going to be able to accomplish this? I guess one question is, is this increase, is it a mandated increase, or is it something that we have to disagree to do? I know you're talking, I know the study shows what needs to be done, but is that something the state says, you're going to have to do this? Okay.
My understanding of it is that it would be like the public defender contracts where in order, if you were to opt in, you would have to meet these staffing and compensation requirements in order to be eligible for the reimbursement.
Right, yeah.
Under the proposed legislation that did not succeed last year and which has not yet passed.
Right.
So it'd be totally conchange.
Yeah, I understand all that.
The model that we were looking for was if we went to those numbers, we would have to meet the staffing and compensation, after which we would get the reimbursement.
Right.
And it would totally, it would be an opt-in.
Right.
This request is about made repetitive right now in this market, but it's not mandated at all.
Just retain what you have.
I'd like to, yes.
And how many do you have? You got?
Three deputy prosecutors, a half-time child support deputy, Doug and me who are paid by the state.
Okay. So you and Doug are paid by the state?
We are.
I mean, besides what we kick in.
We are.
So you're talking about three full-timers?
So it's a lot of moving parts right now just because of the legislation. We know that the legislation usually takes several years to actually get through, so, I mean, we could be getting support from the state in the future. We don't know that at this point.
Definitely.
And we could leave them the test next year. You would have a problem with that.
I don't think I could in good conscience fight you on that.
Okay. I mean, no, you know, if we do come up with a raise, they can stay at what they're at.
It would be a raise for both of my current employees. They would have already received their raise. It would be very hard for me to argue before.
For 2024.
For 2024.
You'll look for that third person, that'd be 82.
Correct. And that's part of the problem is, that's, 80 is sort of a rookie, right out of law school rate. To go get somebody with years of experience might be up to 90, but I'm not here asking for 90, because I don't know what, it's a moving target, because I don't even know what range of experience they're going to have. That's why happy to be 82 available is.
Replacing the one you've got, what are you posting it at? 82, too?
I haven't done that until I decided, until I heard from you all what I could post to that. So I think almost do 82, a range of 78 to 82, something like that. That's my experience.
I told the sheriff we'd keep this kind of short.
I'm okay doing it till, you know, the end of this year, but we're going to have to look at budget and see what we're going to be able to, we don't know what we're going to get into on that until it shows up, see where we are.
Okay.
If we have an issue like we did last year, I don't know how we're going to do it, but we'll figure it out, I guess.
I think there will be options for us.
We don't have an amended 144 yet, don't do either.
No, but you could.
We can go ahead.
Because you actually don't sign it up.
I can have that to you today, I promise.
And I'll make a motion that we approve it to the end of this fiscal year, and then carry on the next year until we review the budget and see where we are.
Got a motion for, to do this this year?
I'll second.
With a look at next year. You second, Ashley? Motion by Kenny, second by Ashley. Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I understand that that's not easy for anybody.
Help us all you can, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, nice to meet you, sir. Okay. Ms. Winnings?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I sent this through email this morning that I'd like to hear copy here, is to go over what we took in for taxes and what the counties made in investments.
Hope you have good news, please.
Yeah, I'm spending money, I'm giving it. Okay. I stand corrected, which is, because yesterday I mentioned at the commissioner's meeting a lower amount than what we actually made for our spring settlement, and this is for the public's knowledge as well, but we took in $26,357,643,13, and the lit, the lit income tax was $1,454,966. So during the spring settlement, then, we came out at $27,812,594.79. So there's still a lot of back taxes out there. As a treasurer in our office, we don't have to send courtesy letters out, but we did just because of the amount of money that get paid to use the ink, the postage and whatnot to recoup some of the back taxes, others who just actually forgot to pay, and then there's ones in that stack that are eligible for tax sale. And even though I send the courtesy letters, I do send some out prior to the tax sale when it gets certified July 1st, because once July 1st hits, by state statute, they will incur additional fees. So I'm trying to give them every opportunity to come in to try to avoid those added fees. So, but that tax sale certification will occur on July 1st. And we already have our tax sales scheduled, it's scheduled for September 22nd. And then going back to the making money, year-to-date interest in Trusted Indiana, we have earned, and this is just for this year, $416,442.47. And then when you look at the ARPA funds, there was one entered at $1.5 billion, that alone since its inception has made $54,205.3, and then the other ARPA fund was $2.5 million, and that's earned $90,47.11 since its inception on interest. And then on the second page that you have is what has been, I guess, allocated in the funds of the ARPA, but currently those funds are still sitting in trust, earning as much money as possible for the county.
Currently, how many, like outstanding taxes are out there? Got any kind of an idea?
It's, it's quite a bit because we decided whether we were going to mail courtesy letters out or not. Of course, our spring settlement is always a lot more than fall because people just go ahead and pay spring and fall, and then we have a couple accounts, and they're huge, they go ahead and pay everything in the spring because we have an agreement of where our cap sits at the Empower Bank, and because of a small-town bank, we had to raise that limit a little bit, but they could figure out why the difference from this year to last year was because these big corporations ended up paying everything in the spring. So, yeah, so it's always more in the spring than it is in the fall. So I don't really care as long as they pay. So that's all I have. Any questions?
Those interest dollars, are they just getting rolled over to County General?
They can move over, and I think they can use for.
Is that where they're going right now, though?
Are they just sitting in the account?
They're in the trust yet.
Okay. They've taken out of there yet?
Yeah.
Okay. So that rolls over, are we getting on that too, then?
Very little. It sits in County General, I think it's only sitting.
No, I mean, if it's rolling over in the account, it's still getting the same.
Well, right now, I think trust is like over 5%, I haven't checked lately, but when it goes back over to County General, it's like.
I understand that, but if we're rolling that, like the ARPA fund has got $140,000 in interest, that money's still in those accounts of Trust Indiana, right?
Correct.
And that, that's drawing the same amount of interest as the principal?
Should be.
If it's rolling over in the account, it should be.
Should be, if it's staying in there, it should be.
Okay, okay.
And then anytime we have more funds in property taxes, and we'll move that continuously. We always want to leave a little bit just in case something backwards, we have to back out of the tax system, but it's moving over, and I believe that County General, according, we have to leave a certain amount in for the bank for our contract. Every time we see that threshold go over, then we move that on over to County General as well.
Very good.
Right.
Thank you, Ellen. I don't have any, I didn't get a list of transfers yet, so I'm going to do them real quick.
I could have reported staff.
I know, that's fine. I understand. Everybody see them online? Transfers?
Yeah.
Entertaining motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Bill makes a motion to approve a transfer.
I'll second.
Melanie.
Melanie seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Where's my list here? Okay, we've got two additionals?
Yes, they weren't advertised timely for your May meetings, so I think you had them in front of you, but.
We couldn't.
Couldn't act on.
Yeah, we got one for 250,000 for Park Road and County Road 200 West Water Main. Comes out of LIT Economic Development. Everybody see that one? I got it. Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
That's a move.
Bill makes a motion.
Second.
Kenny seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor? County Health Truck Repair made the motion. It wasn't advertised right, correct?
Correct.
So we have to redo it again. $2,200 for repairing maintenance on a truck from the Health Department.
I'll make that motion.
Kenny makes a motion to approve. Deanna seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll pass that one down then. Transfers are done. I didn't see. Okay, we've got two appointments to make. One is to the library. Chris Ramey's expressed interest in serving on the library board. Is this a two-year term?
Is that what it says when you do that?
I think that's what it says. Resides in the city limits of Greensburg have done so for two years.
Yeah, it's completing a term that was vacated.
Bill Ratliff's.
Yes.
It's just for the end of the, end of his term. Is that right? I'll make a motion. We approve Chris Ramey to fill out Bill Ratliff's term.
I'll second.
Kenny makes a motion, Bill. Appoint Chris Ramey. Melanie seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't know where I got to sign that, Jan, but you have to tell me in a minute. Pass it down there, and I'll see her on the way out. We have one more appointment we need to make, and that is to the Board of Health. I gave everybody a copy of the people that we tabled that from last week, her last month's meeting. Give everybody a copy of who Dr. Howe sent to me, sent to us. I'm open to discussion, open to anybody that. The only one I really know on there would be Megan Lanning Bowden. I really wouldn't know her. I just knew her grandpa was.
Looks like we might put it up on the wall and throw a dart at it.
Yeah, I know.
That's exactly what Dr. Howe said.
They're all pretty qualified.
Should have narrowed it down to one, so.
He said he wouldn't do that, said he was going to leave a decision up to us. I'll entertain a motion for, to appoint somebody.
Well, I think Megan Lanning's qualified. That's probably my closest.
I agree.
Knowing someone, I'll make that motion.
Bill makes a motion to appoint Megan Lanning Bowden.
I'll second.
Mel second.
Ashley second.
Anybody else have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That's all I have on my list. Anybody gang Sheriff, gang force?
Todd.
How's, what, the train deal? I haven't seen anything on it. I just wondered.
I didn't know the guy, Pepper.
Pardon?
I didn't know the guy that-
Anybody else? Anyone?
Your budgeted calendar-
Train hit a car.
Oh, calendar.
Two miles.
Was the calendar ever okay for everybody for what we're doing in August?
Yes.
September and October?
What time do you want to start on August 14th?
For the, for the collective faith for the departments? 2:00 too early?
How many hours did it take us last year, Janet? Do you remember?
I thought we started either 2:00 or 3:00, and we're done by 6:30-ish.
I was going to say bedtime's around 7:30.
I'm open to one if we can start at 1:00. I'm open at 1:00.
Yeah, I am, too.
Same starter.
And they, they get 10 or 15 minutes? Is that what you're?
Yeah, I think try to hold them to 10.
It's a suggestion.
Todd will be in my pocket at 3:00.
So then August 15th, your regular meeting, you'll close that meeting, go right into the budget discussions. The 17th.
When we doing that the day before?
Day after.
The day after.
August 15th.
Right, August 15th is a regular meeting, then we'll close it, go right into budget. Okay.
And then 19th is a public hearing of September. October 17th is when you do your budget adoption. So we can get this, we have to get the gateway, so that's all right.
Okay. That's fine. Patty, get any yelling out? I'll entertain a motion adjourned. Kenny makes a motion. Deanna seconds. All those in favor?